Because we want to get the meeting start at 6:20 already. We have a lot of people in the room and I don't want to hold too long with the meeting. On that, I'll go ahead and start to open the sessions. And once again, I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, Tuesday, February the 4th. And we'll go ahead and start the call order, please. With the order and invocations by Father Joseph Tran. Please come up and do the invocations. But first, I want also to thank you for accepting this invitation. And over the weekend, it was his 35 years anniversary for serving the community. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you for inviting me to be here. So let us all stand in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. God, we thank you for this time that we come together. We ask you to bless the member of the Fountain Valley City Council. We also ask you to bless all of us as people that live in Fountain Valley. And please help us so that we can work together to continue to make City of Fountain Valley a nice place to live. We ask you to bless this gathering, this meeting tonight. May everything we do for the good of the people and the good of the city. We praise all of this in the name of your son, our Lord. Amen. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you so much, Father Joseph, for the invocations. And go ahead and salute to the flag, Councilmember Patrick Harper.
Thank you for joining in our pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
Pledge of allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, World Car, please.
Councilmember Constantine.
Here.
Councilmember Grandis.
Here.
Councilmember Harper.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Keneen.
Here.
Mayor Chair Bowie.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Okay, Mr. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we have one. Item number seven, a revised staff report has been given to the City Council and the public.
Okay, I see it here. Thank you so much. City Manager, do we have any update?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, thank you so much. We wanted to inform the community that we are well in our planning for the 2025 City of the City, which is scheduled for Thursday, March 6, 2025, at the Sagon Grand Center on Brookhurst and Edinger. And our theme this year is Going for the Gold. We will be congratulating our 2024 medalist and also embracing our future 2028 Olympics coming to Southern California. Tickets are available for sale at $55 per ticket, and you can purchase tickets on the city website at www.fountainvalley.gov. Also a reminder to our resident that we have tax assistance at the center at Founder Village on February the 12th from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. This is a free one-hour appointments for tax assistant with a focus on people who are age 50 and older. This program is administered through the Tax Counseling for the Elderly, volunteers in cooperation with AARP, and the IRS, in which IRS-certified volunteer provide free assistance and basic income tax return preparation with electronic filing to qualified individuals. As you know, Southern California Edison continued to replace their deteriorated vault that is located at the intersection of Brookhurst and Edinger. And SCE will notify resident in the adjacent residential quadrants for any upcoming power outages that will be needed to facilitate the completion of the work. Construction is anticipated to be completed by the end of February 2025, so we thank the community for your patience. The planning commission is canceled for February 12, 2025. City Hall continues to close every Friday, but our operation hours have been extended Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. City Hall will also be closed to the public on Wednesday, February 12 for Lincoln's birthday. That concludes my update.
Thank you so much, City Manager. As a mayor's update, first of all, I want to congratulate to 2025 Miss Fountain Valley Jacqueline Cabalha and 2025 Miss Fountain Valley Tyn Lurell Buchheiser, I think that's how you pronounce it, and the little princesses. Due to the anticipated rain for Wednesday, February 5, 2025, through Friday, February 7, city staff will like to notify Fountain Valley resident that the city has a sandbag fuel station available. So sand stations' locations are at the city yard, which is 1,700, no, 1,7300 Mount Hartman Street, and also at the recreational center Spork Park. And let's see, and each sandbag station has sand and bags available for resident to use. Resident should bring their own shovels. It is recommended that the bags only be filled halfway with sand. This prevents them from getting too heavy to lift and allow for the top of the bag to be fold under the, to create a good seal when stacking. Okay, and that's the only thing I have to report as a mayor's message. Okay, we go ahead and move along to our presentations, and I want to call in Christine Pug from Vice President Advocacy and Government Relation to receive the award. She's here? Oh, great. Okay. So I have a recognitions for you, and it's, so Memorial Care, Orange Coast Medical Center has been in Fountain Valley since February 1996 and is the only nonprofit hospital in Fountain Valley. The hospital was voted a top workplace and the number one best hospital in Orange County by the readers of the Orange County Register. Orange Coast Medical Center fulfill its community's healthcare needs with innovations and a commitment to excellence. All delivery in a beautiful setting. They provide compassionate care and personalized service to our community. And I have a little story to tell, to tell everyone, to share everyone, I should say that. So my first son, when he was four years old, and Memorial Care was the first hospital that came to his system was when he was having his first asthma attack. That's how I, I didn't know he has asthma. So I want to thank you then for that. And my second daughter, last year, they came to system as well. She has a skin conditions that we didn't know what it's all about, and they were the first to intervene, so I want to thank you for their service. All right, so I have a certificate of recognitions, and you would kindly come up and receive this certificate of recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking at the fires today. I have to just say, thank you on behalf of Memorial Care, what you do every day. It is a team play. Thank you.
And if you would like to say if you would, you will.
If you'd like. Yeah. On behalf of, well, I think you can hear me, so I will try, but on behalf of Memorial Care, we are privileged to care for this community. Being recognized today at Orange Coast Medical Center, we've been caring for this community for over 29 years, but we continue to care in other forms, too. We have our medical group offices, our imaging, our physical therapy. You see Memorial Care everywhere, not only in Fountain Valley, but we have grown to over 220 sites of care throughout Orange County and the LA County area, and we are very proud and privileged. Our staff, our physicians, our nurses, our leaders take care of you. Thank you for allowing us to be in your community, and thank you for the recognition, Mayor Bowie and the council members tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. So I want also to ask our city attorney if we have any reportable actions in closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no reportable actions.
Okay, great. Thank you. And for those who are sitting in the room probably wondering, why are we wearing this dress, right? So just letting you know that in our last meeting, it was a little bit my fault that we had a miscommunication. We weren't wearing our Alzai, so we all agreed to wear it today, past the Tet Lunar New Year. So I want to thank you to my colleague and our city attorneys and my city manager, we all wear Alzai today to represent the Tet Lunar New Years. Okay, so moving along, so.
And there's a survey on who wore it past. No, just kidding, just kidding.
That's a good one, I like that. All right. So Mr. City Clerk, is there any request to speak?
We have a second presentation, recognition of the Fountain Valley firefighters.
Hold on. Oh, that's right, that's right there. My apology. Okay, yes, we do have a, that's why I have my colleague here. Vice Mayor. All right, we have a recognitions for the Fountain Valley firefighters, presentations by Bill McQuay, our Fire Chief.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I thought maybe you weren't calling me up because I didn't dress for the party. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to come up here today and do a short presentation to recognize the efforts of what our people, not just our people in our fire department here, but the fire departments across Southern California. On January 7, everybody is aware of the Palisades and the Eden Fire that broke out that day and the disasters that occurred. It was a significant event. I guess before I go too far, we do have a few members that are with us today that were on those fires. I'm going to ask them to come up here with me. So we have Captain Fasulo, Engineer Cook, and Firefighter Boss. Why don't you guys come up here? So January 7, early that morning, we had a significant event, and I'm not going to get into the details of the weather event that occurred because I'd be up here for a long time, but it was really a perfect storm that day. We had 70 to 80 mile an hour sustained winds that were blowing. We had gusts that were exceeding 100 miles an hour, and that was blowing across hills that had large fuel beds with extremely low fuel moistures that haven't seen any rain through a hot summer well into our winter, and it was literally the perfect storm that aligned. That morning, when those fires broke out, we knew really early on that this was going to be a significant event, and it was going to take a significant amount of resources to deal with it. We've been doing these fires and running these fires in the fire department for many years. I know that this fire, these fires brought a real focus on wildland fires and the disaster. But I've been running these fires for over 30 years, and it was going on well before me. And our fire department responds on these fires from the Mexican border all the way up to Oregon border, and we do it all summer long, and now the fire seasons have exceeded or extended well into our winter season. So we're really doing this year round, and when we're not running on fires, we're running on mudslides or earthquakes or any of these other large-scale events. So really, we're focusing on one event, but it's really important, and what I want to share with the community is, our fire department isn't just local. We do this throughout the state, and we do this year round on a regular basis, and it's part of what we do as an agency. Our, it isn't just, so I invited these three members up here because these guys were on the front line on those fires that day. But what's important to point out is, our resources that respond on these fires, the guys on the front line are fighting those fires, but the impact of that event goes far beyond just those crews that roll out that door. We sent our Engine 31 crew, we sent our OES crew out there, but they're out there for two weeks on the front line. Sometimes, we've had resources dedicated up to two months, and we'll rotate crews out every two weeks and relieve them out there. But what's happening here on the backside is, these guys are fighting the fires here and taking care of the emergencies here and making sure that the 911 calls are met every single time it comes in, and they don't go home either. So they're here for five days, get a day off, then they're here for four days and get a day off, and then here for two or three or four days after that. So they're paying a price here and a big impact, too. It's not just the guys that roll out, it's the entire organization. Then it takes the next step. What's really important is, our fire family isn't just the guys here in the station. It's also their wives and their kids and their significant others that don't get to see these guys for two weeks because they came to work for two days, and then they get to send them a text and say, I'm going on a wildland fire, I won't be home for two weeks. And now their wife's at home dealing with the kids and everything else. So it's important for me to share that component of this so people really get the scope of what is, what's entailed when we respond on these fires. So my dad, when he was around, he used to say to me when I was a young fireman, I'd come home, he'd say, how was your shift? I'd say, oh, it was, we were up two, three times last night, it was busy. And he would always say, you know, a slow day for the fire department is a good day for the community. And I used to think about that, and I was thinking, I think he's talking about the old joke, you know, you just play cards all day at the fire station. I'm here to tell you, there is no slow day at the fire station, but what he was really saying was, he was referring to these events. This is not a slow day for the fire department, and this is a disaster for the community. So a slow day for the fire department truly is a good day for the community because a bad day is really a major disaster. One other thing I wanted to talk about, when these guys responded on this fire that day, our Engine 31 crew was one of the first outside resources to get on the front lines of that fire. And the reason why that happened is because here in our Southern California region, we really work really well together, sharing resources and our mutual aid. We have agreements for mutual aid, and there's, there's agreements up and down the state on how we share resources with OES and respond and dispatch resources. But that particular morning, the LA Fire Chiefs knew they had a major disaster on their hands. They were going to lose homes, they were going to lose lives, and this was happening really fast. They didn't have the luxury of saying, well, let's start ordering resources, go through the process, make sure that there's a financial component to it, and we'll get them in 12 or 24 hours. They needed them right now. So they sent out a message to the Orange County Fire Chiefs, and we all communicate very closely, and they said, can you send us resources immediately? Mutual aid, we can't guarantee funding, but we need fire trucks because we're losing people and we're losing houses. And we said, absolutely. We loaded up our people and they rolled out, and they were on some of the first people on the front line because we did that. So we made good choices, we did good things, we saved lives, we saved property, and that's part of the bigger picture, and that's, that's really our why and our greater purpose. So we wanted to make sure that we met that. I got a little bit of a presentation here that I'm going to roll through, a couple quick slides. So the Palisades Fire, the guys that were out there on our Engine 31 crew, we had Captain Waterworth, Engineer Sorison, our firefighter, paramedic, Dolly and Boss. Boss is up here with us tonight. These guys were some of the first guys on that Palisades Fire. Some of the statistics for that fire, there was over 8,000 structures that were damaged or completely destroyed, 12 civilian fatalities, one firefighter injury. When you look at that little video that's looping on here, I've been on so many of these fires and wind-driven fires, and it's hard to explain to people that environment. The video really doesn't do it justice. What I always say is, when you're in there, you're getting hit by thousands of embers, the wind's blowing, the noise, the fire, everything's going on. The way I explain it to people is I say it, it's kind of like the air is on fire. You're in this environment, and it literally feels like the air is on fire around you, and that's what you're trying to deal with. So sometimes in these environments, it's almost impossible to save everything. You just have to, you have to triage and deal with what you can. So when you look to the right on there and you see that picture, when we respond out and we go out on the initial actions of a fire, that's what it looks like. The houses are burning, the structures are burning, and we're on the pavement and we're fighting fires. But the fire goes through stages, and you're not just fighting structured fires the entire time. So you see the guys on the left, and those guys are, they're swinging hand tools, they're climbing hills, they're laying hose lines. It goes through these phases of the hard work that they're on, and they go out on that IA and they're, they're working for two to three days straight without, without rest, without relief, without proper meals, any of those things as they fight these fires. Then you get into the next days where you get a day off and you're on for 24 hours, but you're out on the line, and you're, you're climbing hills, you're carrying heavy hose packs, you're laying thousands of feet of hose out there, and you're working hard the whole time. So it's a, it's an exhausting and encompassing experience for all of them. All right, this is a quick video that is going to play here in a second. Captain Waterworth, he's amazing, and every day I seem like I came to work, I would get another video of Captain Waterworth because he was doing some kind of live news feed somewhere for local news, international news, wherever it was. And I have to say, he, he really represented our fire department, his crew, our community, and everyone around him himself, like, to the highest level. I was so impressed every time I would see him. So he, this particular clip was like over 10 minutes of live TV that they had him on there talking, which is like a lifetime in news feeds. But we've got just a couple minutes of him, and he does a real good job of explaining kind of what they were doing.
Hi, good morning, yes, we love our firefighters, and as you know, that so many of them have answered the call out here. We're off of PCH, right near the coast, and Captain Waterworth joins me now from Fountain Valley Fire. You were the first, one of the first five teams to come out here from Fountain Valley, and you're coming off of a 24-hour shift. Unfortunately, you have the misfortune of ending your day by talking to me. But let me, let me ask you this, what has the last 24 hours been like for you?
So at this point in the incident, we have enough resources to where we're on 24-hour work cycles. So we will come to base at 0700 in the morning and then be assigned out to division. Our strike team's been consistently working in Division Charlie since the incident happened.
Yeah.
So we meet up with our team, and we go out and do the work for the day, whatever that might be, for 24 hours, report back to base, which is where we're headed now.
Yeah.
For a rest day, and then they continue to need us for the incident. We'll be back tomorrow at 0700 to find out when and where.
So, so it's 24 hours of continuous work, and where do you sleep when you're, when you're actually out there in the field?
So we don't sleep on the 24 hours. We're just patrolling or whatever your mission happens to be. Our mission has downgraded from severely intense to less intense as, as the incidents improved in condition.
Those first couple of days, when you first came out here, what was it like for you?
It was very intense. We were on the initial response for mutual aid from Orange County, and we came in and our job was what we call IA or initial attack.
Yeah.
And we didn't know how big this fire was, we didn't know how many structures were involved, and there was minimal resources. We went straight into the Palisades, and this company and our team of five engines and two battalion chiefs fought fire for three days before we were relieved. So no sleeping, we didn't really have food, we just kind of grinded it for three days and did what we could.
Yeah, I mean, how did, how did you do all that work and not drop? Was it just adrenaline, you would say?
A lot of adrenaline, a lot of just sticking with our, with our teams and kind of supporting each other and getting through it. There were, you know, a lot of really low moments, witnessing the devastation, being physically exhausted, but the community needed us, that's what we do, that is our job, and we just had to step up.
I mean, I know you're going to say that it's, it's your job, right? But there's an emotional toll that, that takes place. Now that you've had maybe a couple of hours to process what's just happened, what goes through your mind right now?
It's completely devastating. I mean, our hearts go out to the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles and anyone who was affected by this horrible disaster. It's a very difficult thing to watch, and let alone be that close in it, and we just wish everybody the best of luck.
Hi, good morning.
All right, so that was Brent representing, and I thought he did a great job. The great thing about Brent is he's the first one to tell you that he did a great job. So just a couple pictures from the Palisades Fire, we'll, we'll move on to the Eden Fire because our guys weren't just on one fire. They, we had the Palisades Fire break out, and then a handful of hours later that same day, we had the Eden Fire break out, and we sent our second crew out of Station 2 on our OES rig. And everybody that's ever seen the green fire truck that runs around the state, that's what we call our OES rig, that's part of a state mission. They provide us the fire truck, and we send it anywhere up and down the state for any major disaster and support that need, and that's what we did here today. On that fire, we had Captain Fasulo here with us today, Engineer Cook, and firefighter paramedics Flood and Kearns, and everybody's got to love that mustache on Jeff Kearns' team, by the way. So that was the crew that was on that fire. Some of the statistics on the Eden Fire, they had, it was over 10,000 structures on that fire were either damaged or destroyed. You take these two fires together, it was almost 19,000 structures that were damaged or destroyed. Let me put that into perspective for you. We have about 19,000 residential units here in the city of Fountain Valley. That would be every single one of our residential units in the city were damaged or destroyed. That's a significant event. They had 17 fatalities, nine firefighters injured throughout the event, and you guys were there for the full two weeks?
Yeah.
So here's a couple pictures from the Eden Fire. Here's a short video that you're going to see kind of the landscape afterwards. So I talked a little bit about the, the fire and the embers blowing. It's kind of hard to explain to people what it's like to be in an environment like this when you're a fireman and you're driving down a street and literally every single home that you see is on fire, on both sides of the street, in front of you and behind you, or later on in the event at about this stage, when you drive down the street and every home is taken to the ground and all you see is fireplaces and addresses on the curb. It's, it's really gut-wrenching because you know everyone of those homes were somebody's special place. It's where their, their lives were, where they, they raised their kids, where they had all of their memorable moments, and they're gone. And you do your best because that's what we do to save and protect these, but it's really apocalyptic. You look around and it's kind of hard to find the words to explain because you can't imagine ever seeing it, and there it is before you. Here's a couple other pictures from that, and really that is what I'm trying to describe to you. And this is the last slide that I have, but I'd just like to end by saying I appreciate the few minutes that I had up here to recognize not just the efforts of the guys that were there, but the guys that were covering the stations and making sure that we're meeting our 911 calls here and that their families at home that were carrying the load. So thank you.
Fire Chief, thank you for the presentations. Actually, I visited one of the fires area last week, and there was one thing that I've noticed is, although the fire is out, but the smell is, it's in the air. Even though the fire is out, you can smell rubber, you can smell chemical in the air. So I can't imagine why the firefighter would go through the smoke when the fire's on, so I, and so I want to echo that as well. And what's got me surprised, I saw metal was melting on the ground as well. I, I think I saw a few in here, but there was, so if metal was melting, you know, so I can't imagine the condition of the heat that was out there. It must be, you know, super high for, for the metal to melt. So I want to thank you for the presentations. Any councilman would like to make a comment?
I just, I'm, I'm in awe of you guys. You guys really do a tremendous job. We don't thank you enough for all you do every single day. I always say that, you know, you guys, most of you guys know my cousin was a captain in the fire department. People ask me, well, why didn't you go into the fire department? And I'm, I'm not.
Actually, I visited one of the fires area last week, and there was one thing that I've noticed is, although the fire's out, but the smell is, it's in the air. Even though the fire's out, you can smell rubber, you can smell chemical in the air. So, I can't imagine why the firefighter would go through the smoke when the fire's on, so, and, and so I wanna echo that as well. And what's got me surprised, I saw metal was melting on the ground as well. I, I think I saw a few in here, but there was, so if metal was melting, you know, so I can't imagine the condition of the heat that was out there. It must be, you know, super high for, for the metal to melt. So, I wanna thank you for the presentations. Any council member would like to make a comment?
I, I just, I'm, I'm in awe of you guys. You guys really do a tremendous job. We don't thank you enough for all you do every single day. I always say that, you know, you guys, most of you guys know my cousin was a captain in the fire department, and people ask me, "Well, why didn't you go into the fire department?" And I'm, I'm not brave enough, you know? I, I, I could not do what you guys do, and again, I just wanted to thank you. I was just curious, like, the air tank, how, how did you guys have enough, like, air to breathe while you were there? I just can't even imagine what you went through, but my, my appreciation's there for you always, so just thank you.
Thank you all so very much. We really appreciate you.
All right, okay. All right, go ahead, and we'll go ahead and move along to the next items. Mr. City Clerk, do we have anybody request to speak on unscheduled matter only?
I have no request to speak on unscheduled matters.
All right, thank you. What about, do we have any? What is it? Public speaking on unscheduled matter?
Yeah, something that's not on the agenda. You're Mr. Hutton, correct? You requested to speak on item six.
We'll get there. All right. Thank you. And once again, Mr. City Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on schedule matter?
We have a request to speak on item number six and on item number seven.
Six and seven. All right, thank you so much. All right, so we have a consent calendar. Item one through six will be approved simultaneously with one motion unless we have a separate actions or discussion is requested. Does anyone have an item that they want to remove?
Yeah, I wanna pull number six, cuz I'm gonna recuse myself, but other than that, I make a move to approve items one through five.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, let's go to the vote. We have a first and a second.
You're getting ahead of me, one second. Now vote. Items one through five pass 5-0.
Thank you. All right, before we go ahead and to, on item six, I got a few questions for, before you recuse yourself. Councilmember Constantine, I have a few resident asking me, why do you, at this juncture in time, do you want, you want to recuse yourself when through the entire general planning process, you did not recuse yourself?
Okay, well, the general plan update was a very, very big project, and it took years for staff and others to do input on that. I don't wanna risk anything with this item, but I wanna say, I didn't make any mistake in approving the general plan update. I fully stand by my actions. If I had it to do again, I would vote again to approve it. This item number six, though, is really too close to home. When I charted it out, it was like less than 400 feet. The city did it, it's like 860 some odd feet. It doesn't really matter what the footage is specifically, it's very, very close to my home. When I walk out my front door and I can reach that destination, the South Park land owned by a Sacioca family, and I can, I can reach that destination in like three minutes, not sprinting, that's close. So, I do need to recuse myself, and I really don't, do I have to take any more questions? Because it doesn't matter about, I, basically, I've been in my home, I don't even know, 26 and a half years since 1998, and that's my home, and it's a matter of comfort as far as really, truly believing I need to recuse myself, because this is fine-tuning an item on the general plan update, if I'm not mistaken, and I feel it's highly inappropriate for me to vote. So, do I?
I can have the questions for the city attorney. Ideally, is how many feet do you need to be to recuse yourself? I do, I think the rules is, is it called for 500 feet radius to recuse yourself?
So, to be required to disqualify is what the rules say. You're required to disqualify when you're within 500 feet, or you're between 500 and 1,000 feet, and there's a test, or over 1,000 feet if you're dealing with something that's so impactful. Like, if Angel Stadium was moving in 1,100 feet from your house, you'd have to recuse yourself, even if you were beyond the 500 or the 1,000-foot marker. So, there are some quantitative numbers, 500, 1,000. There's also a qualitative impact to it. So, if, if you're within 500, you must recuse presumed, unless you get a realtor's opinion. 500 to 1,000, there's some factors you look at. 1,000 and over, you are presumed not to have a conflict, but again, there's some factors that can, that can overcome that. Angel Stadium, that kinds of thing. So, Councilmember Constantine's property, where she lives, is between 500 and 1,000. There are some factors that, that go into that analysis.
And should also, do you also recuse if you also have, whether you have a direct or indirect interest? And here she's mentioning that she's uncomfortable, so what is her?
Well, no, it's, it, let me be really, really clear here, cuz sometimes if I don't say something, then, "Oh, well, you didn't say, so we assumed," and da-da-da-da. Ethically and morally, for me to vote on this, it doesn't feel right. Me as a person, like, I don't do, you know, my campaign contributions from developers, I love our police and fire, totally respect them. I wanna be free when I sit up here. I don't wanna feel, you know, to be beholden. So, I don't know what it's like to feel otherwise, and at this point, I'm gonna recuse myself. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. It's just that, you know, it's public just warning. So, let me, I want this, you'll be fine, you're fine. So, the question to our city attorney is, in the future, at any given point, a person just have to recuse themselves just because they feel they're not comfortable? Does that justify enough?
So, justification-wise, what we hear at the beginning of any ethics discussion is there's a floor, which is the ethics rules, and then there's something above that. So, when we're talking about justification to recuse, it kind of looks at it, I, I look at it the other, the other way, upside down. There's a certain point where you must recuse. After that, there are discretionary areas where you might feel a need to recuse, and then after that, a person can abstain for any reason. So, if we're talking about hard lines, that's, that's where the conflict rules come in and say you must, we say recuse, the word is disqualify. At, under certain standards, you must disqualify, and in other areas, it's gray. And a person might say, "Okay, I'm in, I'm in the gray area, I don't wanna, I don't wanna risk it, I'll step out." And then, you know, the gray gets, the, the gray gets lighter as you get further away.
Okay. Well, I just, I really don't think that she needed to recuse herself, but of course, it's, it's her choice as a council member. I just wanna see, I wanna hear the clarifications for moving forward in the future. We don't just recuse ourselves because you feel uncomfortable. Well, you have to look at the perimeter, under what rule are you applying to recuse yourself? You know, for, for the clarity.
That's correct.
Actually, I, I do have one question on that, too. I'm just curious. I, I have no problem with her recusing. There are three properties. Could this have been split, so one property she recused and the other two properties she could have voted on?
Could it legally? Yes.
But I think at this point, I think we, there was a vote on last time, it might, you know, implicate certain things. Okay, all right. Okay, we go ahead and, well, she recused herself, but then she wants to talk on certain item.
Not on this item.
Not on this item? Okay, all right. So, do we, go ahead and start with the public comment on item number six?
Michael Hutton?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and my fellow citizens. Once again, my name is Michael Hutton, and I have been a resident of Fountain Valley for 23 years, and a resident of the Fountain Valley Huntington Beach area for over 50 years. I came down here this evening to respectfully request that you, the city council, vote no on the proposed ordinances to approve code amendments 25-01, 02, and 03, to increase the number of housing units within these development zones. Based on what I saw in the first reading of the ordinance, let me see if I, if I got this right. A developer, in my view, maximizes his profit by fitting as many residential and commercial units as he can into a certain space. More units, more profit. This proposal would more than double the amount of units. I saw a number sometime, and I don't know if it's accurate, 491 to 1,100, allowed to be built within these zones, thereby doubling the developer's profit. Units can be directly translated into a number of people. People require city services, resources, and infrastructure. Double the amount of people equals double the demand for water supply, wastewater capacity, fire and protection services, and infrastructure improvements and maintenance. I'll just take a moment here. I'd just like to say a big shout-out to the fire department. Thank you very much. You guys are awesome. To pay for all this current and increased demand, the city uses taxpayer money. If demand is increased, taxes must be increased. So, the pros, the proposal, as I see it, is to double developer profit, all to be paid for by the taxpayer, and according to comments in the last meeting, we are doing this because the state mandates and dictates that we must increase housing units or suffer funding losses and/or legal action. How convenient. Double developer profits, raise taxes to pay for it, and blame the state because they made us do it. I could go on and on forever about how well the state is managed.
Michael, your time's up.
Or should I, okay.
Katie Wright?
I thought we had three minutes, no?
You did. You were, three minutes and 10 seconds.
You know, I've asked if we could do that, and I've been told no. I'd be happy to give you half of my time. I'd be happy to give half my time to my esteemed colleague. Okay.
As for our city attorney, do we have a clarification on that, though, on our policy?
We do. We don't allow persons to transfer time to others.
Okay, that, I hope that answers.
I'm told by a previous, 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 ancient, previous mayor that we used to do that, but we don't do it now. Greetings, Mayor, city council members. I have a question about recusal, since it's on, you know, related to this topic. Mayor Bowie, when was the last time, and I know you all have to do this, when was the last time that you had the ethics training that you're all required to have? Being on city council, everyone is required to take ethics training, and when you're, when you voted, when you're re-elected, I believe that's still a requirement, but even if it's not a requirement going forward, it's something that you had to have, correct? This is not on agenda.
I'll, I'll answer, go ahead and follow with the rest of the questions.
Okay, the question is, you, you objected to Councilmember Constantine recusing herself. You said you didn't think it was right. All I know is that she had just come off literally that week, before she recused herself, of a recent renewal of her ethics training, and they were very strong about what does and does not constitute a reason to recuse yourself. So, to me, she had the most fresh training of any of you on your ethics, and for you to sit here and question her, and you can't tell me, or you choose not to tell me at this moment, when you had your ethics training, I'm just wondering, maybe recusal has more than one definition in the dictionary. Maybe I don't understand what it means. I would much rather trust someone recusing themselves out of their conscience when it's gray area that they might or might not need to, than someone else not recusing themselves. Going through a whole cycle with a security cyber, whatever it was provider just this last year, someone went through the whole process and then said, "Oh, shoot, I should have recused myself on this." You wait till you're halfway through a meeting? Do you guys not read your agendas? I'm, I'm disappointed, I'm frustrated, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I disagree with you to sit there and say that you don't think she should have done so. She's the one with the most recent ethics training by the state of California. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your input, first of all. To answer your questions, we all have the same ethic training at the same time as Councilmember Constantine. If you want, hold on, hold on a minute, you asked me a question, I'm responding. And if you, if you wanna verify that information, you can check with our city clerk. She'd be more happy to give you the, the training. We all went to the same training, same day, same time. Okay? Now, now reference, why I'm not answering, because I want to allow you three minutes. I don't want to respond to you, that would take away your time. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, do we have any more speaker?
I have no further request to speak on this item.
Okay. Does any colleague would like to make any comments on item number six?
I'll move the item for approval.
I'll second. Okay, I'll go ahead. So, there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. I'm just going to make a little, a comment before I vote on this. As you are aware, that on the last meeting, I, my vote was a no. Currently, my vote is, has changed since the last time, because they, although I don't agree with the state, but after today, I can't, there will be future considerations referenced to the unfunded mandate, and we will be addressing the unfunded mandate, and we'll find the solutions how to address the, the mandate that is put upon us. I do not think that it is proper and fair that the state put a mandate on any city in state of California. But for the precautions of being fine, and it's, it's a much harder uphill battle, but I assure you that on my part, I cannot speak for my other colleague how they will vote, but, I mean, in the future, how they're gonna fight, but I will, I will fight the state. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second by Vice Mayor Cunney. Let's vote.
Item number six passes 4-0 with Councilmember Constantine abstaining.
All right, all right, moving along. Item number seven will be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanna really, just in case I wasn't clear, the reason that I recused myself was that I was not comfortable with the fact that I lived so very, very close to the agenda item that site. It's not just I didn't feel comfortable in making a decision. I could make a decision, but it wouldn't be appropriate. Okay, thank you.
Well, since you say that, very, very close, I, I using, I use the Google map. From your property line to the south property is 939 feet.
Right, and I, I did it myself, 400 feet. Colin, our attorney for the city, put together something through maybe the planning department, it was 863 feet. Maybe there's multiple ways to, to measure and gauge this. It doesn't matter. When I walk out my front door in getting to that site, it, like I said, if I can get some, no, this is important, cuz I'm gonna hear pushback and crap, and I don't need it. It's very, very simple. I don't know what the magic number would be. That particular situation didn't feel right to vote on because it was too close. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your input. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven. I'll go ahead and call on staff to, to present the item.
Good evening, Mayor Bowie, council members. I wanted to come up and thank you tonight, first of all, for your support. It's because of your support that the fire department has the ability to serve the community neighboring areas as, as effectively and safely as we do. I apologize, I do have a little bit of a raspy voice this evening. And following the fire chief's presentation is a tough act to follow, but tonight I wanted to discuss with you our proposal to purchase a 2028 Pierce fire engine. The Fountain Valley Fire Department responded to nearly 8,500 incidents in 2024, which makes it one of the busiest departments in Orange County. We look at that. We look at that per personnel, per number of incidents that the fire department responds to each year. Currently, we are on track to run approximately, I looked at it as of today, to respond to over ninety-eight-hundred incidents in two thousand twenty-five. So a fairly significant jump from last year to this year. The two thousand twenty-three Pierce fire engine that was placed in service, May of two thousand twenty-three, currently has just over twenty thousand miles on it, averaging about eleven thousand miles a year. You got to keep in mind, those miles are one to two miles at a time. It's hard city miles, stop and go, and a lot of wear and tear on our fire engine. Staff is requesting that the city council waive the bidding requirements pursuant to Fountain Valley Municipal Code two point three six point zero seven zero A four and authorize staff to issue the purchase order totaling one million eighty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents to South Coast Fire Equipment Incorporated for the purchase of the following fire engine through the existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell, number one one three zero two one, and authorize staff to dispose of fire engine eighty-two-ten through the Carl Moyer grant process. And again, it's for a two thousand twenty-eight Pierce enforcer fire engine for the total of just under one point one million dollars. The two thousand twenty-eight Pierce fire engine will replace the two thousand one American La France fire engine unit number eight-two-one-zero. The fire department adopted the National Fire Protection Association's recommendation to remove an apparatus from frontline service after fifteen years and place it into reserve status for ten additional years. The two thousand one American La France fire engine will exceed NFPA's nineteen-oh-one's recommendation to remove the apparatus from all emergency services, including reserve status, prior to the acquisition of the two thousand twenty-eight Pierce fire engine. The fire department, as I mentioned earlier, is a recipient of this Carl Moyer grant from South Coast Air Quality Management District, AQMD, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. With that, I have to give all the credit for locating the grant and going through all the steps to acquire the funding to Fire Captain Jeremy Hemken, who is here this evening. Come on up. Jeremy was assisting the Long Beach Fire Department with their promotional exam and had a discussion with some of their personnel that Ron seen, and they were talking about grants and ways of funding apparatus with the ever-increasing costs. And one of them mentioned this Carl Moyer grant process to him. Well, he brought it back to the station, researched it, came to me, said, hey, I found this grant. The funding varies from department and needs, and I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to save the city a considerable amount of money. I don't remember exactly what AQMD's initial offer was to the city, but Jeremy looked over, Captain Hemken looked at him and made some conversations with some other agencies and said, you know, I think we can do better than this. And he more than doubled, more than doubled the funding that we received from the Carl Moyer grant process. Captain Hemken has also been the apparatus lead on two of the last three builds, and he's been on the committee for all three of the last Pierce fire engines and tiller trucks builds. So needless to say, he's definitely our subject matter expert on these apparatus. The grant from AQMD will help offset the cost of the new Pierce fire engine benefiting both the department and the environment. The grant does specify that the Pierce fire engine must meet specific emission standards, which it does, and the dismantling of engine eighty-two-ten must be completed in an environmentally responsible manner. The funding, the funding for the grant will be reimbursed to the city when the new engine is received by the city, and all requirements of the grant have been met. So it will be a little while before the funding is reimbursed to the city, but that is when AQMD does choose to reimburse the cities for this. Here's a, an image of our current engine. This is the two thousand twenty-three Pierce fire engine that serves the community out of Fire Station One. The two thousand twenty-eight Pierce engine will be nearly identical to this apparatus. It'll meet all the AQMD diesel engine requirements, and our goal is to try to build these apparatus in a fashion so not only are they reliable and safe, but they also maintain a configuration that allows crews, our suppression personnel, to quickly and effectively not only suppress fires, but handle any kind of incident that they're faced with. All the equipment is stored in the same compartments from one rig to the next, and these are known as the most reliable apparatus that are currently on the market. Again, has a strong record of performance, safety, long-term reliability. This particular engine has not had one day that it's been out of service since we placed it in service in May of two thousand three. We actually performed the apparatus maintenance, preventative maintenance at Fire Station One, so it's really only been down a few hours at a time. Apparatus parts are also readily available for maintenance and repairs, which does minimize that out-of-service time. The two thousand one American La France engine eighty-two-ten is in service as a reserve apparatus and is retained by the city until dismantling in two thousand twenty-eight. So far, it's completed twenty-three years of service with the city. It currently has a little over a hundred and forty-four thousand miles on it. And again, NFPA nineteen-oh-one recommends a maximum of fifteen years of frontline service with an additional ten years of reserve status for type-one fire engines. Engine eighty-two-ten is approaching the end of its service life in two thousand twenty-six. It already passed SCA QMD's pre-inspection, and it must be delivered to an approved dismantler within sixty days of receiving the two thousand twenty-eight Pierce fire engine to meet the requirements of the Carl Moyer grant. The approved dismantler is right down the street at Beach Boulevard, off of Beach Boulevard. So here's a little bit about the Carl Moyer California Air Resources Board grant. The Carl Moyer grant from AQMD provides funding to enterprises that have current diesel engines that do not meet today's air quality standards and are therefore hazardous to the environment and atmosphere. The city of Fountain Valley has been awarded a contract for reimbursement of one hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Again, the city will be awarded the funds when the two thousand twenty-eight fire engine is delivered to the city of Fountain Valley, approximately October of two thousand twenty-eight, so we have a little ways to go. And fire engine eighty-two-ten is properly dismantled to fulfill the Carl Moyer grant requirements. Carl Moyer grant does not allow a lease-to-own agreement. The signed contract we have from them is due February twenty-seventh, or I'm sorry, February seventh, in just a few days. The submittal of a purchase order for replacement equipment is due March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and our department will be responsible for completing annual progress reports annually every March thirty-first. So a little bit about the cost of the two thousand twenty-eight Pierce fire engine. With a one-hundred percent prepayment option, which is what we have gone with with all of our apparatus over the last, gosh, since two thousand six, when we had leased apparatus, we've always gone with the method of the one-hundred percent prepayment to get a pretty significant discount. Currently, it is one million eighty-nine thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. The upfitting for radios and electronics is thirty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents, which brings a total cost to one million one hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents. There's also miscellaneous equipment and contingency funds for seventy-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, for a total of one million two hundred thousand dollars. The discounts you can see below that, if we do, if council does approve this, is the prepayment discount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and nine dollars, the Carl Moyer grant reimbursement of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. South Coast Fire Equipment Incorporated, who we purchased the apparatus through, placed a good faith hold on the fire department, for the fire department, which resulted in a one-time cost increase savings of one point seven five percent, or nineteen thousand sixty dollars and five cents. And that's just basically, they did that for us because of the relationship that the sales rep has with Captain Hemken here. And again, so your total savings on this particular apparatus is three hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred dollars and five cents. This just breaks it down a little bit further for you, so you could see what you will actually pay for the apparatus, when it's delivered, when the Carl Moyer grant reimbursement is reimbursed back to the city. And keeping in mind, too, that the contingency funds is seventy-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-three cents of this. So the grant total is one million twelve thousand dollars, I'm sorry, one million twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars is what the total cost by the city will be after receiving reimbursement by the Carl Moyer grant. Alternative number one is authorization to purchase and equip a two thousand twenty-eight Pierce enforcer Puck fire engine with allocated funds from the twenty-four-twenty-five budget in the amount of one million two hundred thousand dollars. And two, authorize staff to dispose of one surplus American La France fire engine by means that meet the requirements of the Carl Moyer grant process. Alternative number two is do not approve this action and direct staff to research alternatives. Staff recommends the following, follow the bidding exceptions per Fountain Valley Municipal Code two point three six point zero seven zero A four, and authorize staff to purchase and equip a two thousand twenty-eight Pierce enforcer Puck fire engine in the amount of one million two hundred thousand dollars. And authorized, and two, authorize staff to dispose of one surplus American La France fire engine by means that best meets the requirements of the Carl Moyer grant process. Great. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Okay. Well, thank you, Battalion Chief Matt Barr for the presentations. Before we go into our council member comments, I would like to ask for Mr. City Clerk, if we have any public comments on this one.
We have one request to speak on this item.
Okay.
Libby, you'll have three minutes, and you'll seat up on the board up to your left once you start speaking.
Chukmuknemori, I love the IIs. I've been watching the flood of information and executive orders coming from our new president, and I'm here to ask some questions about their effect on our local community. The United States Office of Management and Budget ordered a pause on all federal financial assistance programs. I understand a judge has paused this order, but it's reasonable to believe that the administration is attempting to work around because their goal is still to stop federal funding.
We have a point of order. Libby?
It does.
Does this item have anything to do with the purchase of a fire engine?
It does. I do have some comments about that in here, too.
Okay. So far, nothing has to do with this item.
Yeah, it's on the second page, but I do address that in here, too.
I would.
It's probably a setup for the grant that we're saving for the fire engine, recommend.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have a point of order on the topic. Go ahead, then, please.
Thank you. To be sure our city is properly prepared if and when this order goes into effect, I'm wondering if the council or city manager has asked city staff to evaluate how this order will affect our city and its residents. Do we know what the impact will be on municipal programs and services in Fountain Valley if the freeze were to go into effect? Do we know if any resources we receive directly or indirectly have DEI or environmental components that are opposed by the current federal government? I'm aware much of the funding I'm asking about comes from the county, but do we know how much of it originates from the federal government? What are the plans to fill these holes when the federal government stops funding these programs and initiatives? Do we rely on federal grants to keep our new navigation center open in order to help move people away from homelessness? Do we rely on federal grants for our local Meals on Wheels programs? What about the Discounted Senior Disabled Transportation Program? What about child abuse prevention? What about services for our disabled residents and veterans? What about our senior services and rental assistance? I know there are seniors living in the Jasmine Apartments at Founder's Village for as little as seven hundred dollars a month. Where do those subsidies come from? And what about disaster preparedness and emergency services? Are federal grants part of funding our new fire station? If so, do we have the resources to complete the construction without those funds? What about this new fire truck that is up for approval this evening? Are the AQMD funds coming from federal grants? And is this grant going to come through in two thousand twenty-eight when the truck's delivered, or are we going to fill the void? Are the environmental considerations for this new truck in opposition to the goals of the new federal directive? Is our sixty-dollar-a-year resident EMT program reliant on any federal funding? Do our police receive any federal funding for vehicles, training, lab services, anything else? What about children's program, childcare programs? If parents don't have access to childcare, will that affect our employment rates? What about infrastructure projects? Do we have any road maintenance injection wells or environmental initiatives that will be threatened if funding is cut? I'm not an expert and don't know if the ins and outs of our government funding.
Libby, if you could keep your comments related to the fire truck, many of your, many of your comments here are not related to the fire truck or the funding of a grant, of one grant. You're referencing many other issues.
This is specifically talking about a grant to fund the fire truck, and it's not even going to come through till two thousand twenty-eight when the truck is delivered. And in the meantime, we're watching what's happening at the federal government where they're shutting everything down. Somebody, a private citizen, has taken control of our payment system and could stop payment on anything. And I think it's a risk for the city to be committing funds that we don't have in hand when we can't trust that the funding is going to come through. And that, I guess that's the, the real piece that affects this decision right now is having an open eye to what is coming from the restriction of federal funding on grants and environmental actions.
Thank you, Libby. Your time's up. I have no further request to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Well, first of all, to, to some, I'm going to try to stay on point to what you have said earlier, and I'm going to make a brief comment, reference to the fire truck grant. First of all, if my colleague up here remember when we had to order the last fire truck, which is the, what do you call that tri-truck? You know, the one that has the?
Ladder truck.
Ladder truck. And it would cost us a lot more if we wait. I think at the time they deliver, I believe the price doubled. And, and I think that if we wait on this one, it's going to double as well by the time it deliver. Now, as reference, what's going to happen to the grant federally? I don't think none of us can answer up here. But all we could say is if, if we don't get now, we'll try twenty-six. If you don't get twenty-six, we try twenty-seven to get a grant. Nothing stopped us from asking for the grant. So that's the only thing I'm going to, and every other things, I cannot comment.
Mr. Mayor, I have comments.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may. I want to really applaud not only Fire Chief Bill McQuaid, also definitely Captain Hemken and the other gentleman, I'm so sorry. I, you guys really are superb. This is amazing. I totally love this. Thank you for your very hard work on this. And, you know, we don't want to reject fire equipment and all, and I firmly believe that the grant's going to come through. Nothing is in jeopardy. I love our current administration, and we're going to be just great for the next four years, and I'm not afraid to say it. And thank you so much. And I move item number, yeah, I do. I move item number seven.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have?
Can I have some questions?
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Harper?
Thank you for the presentation, and congratulations on the, on the grant. That's, that's fantastic. So I had a couple of questions. One is, in the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that the number of incidents you are, you project to go from eighty-five-hundred last year to ninety-eight-hundred this year. Can you explain what would cause such an increase? That's a twenty percent increase. Doesn't make any sense to me.
I have the gentleman for you. I'll touch on that a little bit in those numbers. So our numbers last year were eighty-five-hundred, just under eighty-five-hundred calls, which was about a six and a half, almost seven percent increase from the year before.
Okay.
The numbers that Chief Barr are referencing now is a small window of data, so from January one to today, and he's averaging that out over the next twelve months. Our January has been excessively busy, and we're seeing a big increase in calls, and that has been kind of a standard pattern. My guess is as we project out through the entire year and we start smoothing and averaging things out, we'll probably see about that same six percent increase towards the end of the year, and we'll probably be somewhere in the eighty-seven, eighty-eight hundred calls and start seeing that same growth as we have in the past.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. It's kind of hard to predict twelve months out when you're sitting here today, but we've had a very busy start of the year.
Okay. Thanks. And then I had a question on the Carl Moyer grant for, I guess, Mr. Hemken. I'm sorry, I got a little, little bit of a cold. What is the, tell me about the grant. Is there, is it, how is the amount computed? Is it a matching formula?
So the grant is how many, basically how many miles the apparatus runs per year? We have to meet that minimum standard. That current two thousand one fire engine does not have any diesel regulations on it. So there's no DEF, there's no diesel particulate filter. On these new fire engines, EPA mandates that we have to get all these new EPA requirements when we purchase the new apparatus. That being said, when that grant, we get that grant, that two thousand one fire engine's probably worth anywhere between the range of five to ten thousand dollars. So with this grant, we could take that fire engine So with this grant, we could take that fire engine, turn it into a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars through the grant, through the AQMD.
Oh, no, I think it's great. I'm just curious how the one eighty-seven is computed.
That is all through the AQMD wheelhouse, somebody above my pay level that computes all of that and gives the number. You came back with eighty grand the first time, and then we found some more numbers and more correct data to get it to a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Okay, sounds good. And then I have a question. Can you go back to the picture of the fire engine? I'm just kind of curious. So is the, it looks like the front tire is like a lot bigger than the back tire? Is that, is that correct?
I think it's just the shadow on the picture. So, yeah, they're pretty similar in some ways.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Harper. All right, Councilmember Grandis.
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work. And Captain Hemken, way to, way to look out for the bottom dollar for our city. We appreciate that. And Chief Barr, thank you for the presentation. And, you know, we just celebrated the firefighters a little bit earlier tonight, and to me, my commitment always is to make sure you guys have the best equipment possible to get you home to your families safe. And I can't even imagine, you know, the amount of time that you spend near a vehicle that's that old and the fumes and everything that you're breathing in. So to get a cleaner, running engine, it's healthier for everyone. So again, really appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Grandis, for your little comments. But definitely, we don't want you to get stuck out there, right? Good equipment is always best, and it's going to be very efficient to your workflow. So it's important that when the equipment is phasing out and new equipment needs to come in to replace, to do what you do, I think that it's important for this body of council to support. You need to do your job the right way and the efficient way and safe way. And to my Vice Mayor, which I ain't coming to make? Okay, all right. So we have a?
Just like to add one last thing. The funds for this rig are not reliant upon that grant. We were fully funded in our budget for the purchase of this rig. We don't rely on that money. That money was a bonus that is coming back to us through the hard work and the progressive actions of Captain Hemken looking out, not only to just accept eighty thousand dollars, but to ask them to sharpen their pencil and come back and bring us even more, because that's what we're challenged with as public employees, is trying to do the best we can with our funds, make sure we maximize that opportunity and how we spend it, and then look for every opportunity to help reduce some of that impact on the city. So this is simply an opportunity to reduce the impact that we were already funded and budgeted for internally. So if that grant didn't come through, we still were budgeted to purchase this apparatus. Not only were we budgeted for it, but we've, we extended the life service of the old eighty-two-ten many years, and it's still going to cover us going through. I think you overestimated the value of that thing. It's really, you said five to ten thousand? That's in scrap. It's really worth nothing because the emissions on it don't even qualify. You couldn't buy that rig today. So we're basically getting a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars for nothing out of this. So that's really the impact of that grant.
Well, thank you for sharing that amazing story. I'm sure the public is delighted to hear that little details behind the scenes. So thank you so much for that. And so we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Konstantin, and second by Vice Mayor Kinnon.
I'll second.
Is that correct? I think I heard earlier, right?
It is now. Let's get him some money.
All right, let's vote, please.
Item number seven passes five zero.
All right. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving along to the next item, number eight, presented by our Finance Director, Ryan Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This item before you is the mid-year budget update for the current fiscal year, and we're going to do kind of a tag-team effort here between me and the Finance Manager, Robin Harnish, and I'm going to turn it over to her to kind of kick this off and go through some of the detail of the update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Okay, so the brief outline of what we're going to talk about, current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget, proposed budget modifications. We have OPEB trust, some staffing modifications and twenty-year plan, and then next steps. So looking at this chart, our current budget, we're looking at operating revenues of eighty-one point seven million and operating expenses of seventy-nine point eight, which gives us an operating surplus currently of about one point nine million. When we factor in capital improvement projects and non-operating revenue, we're looking at four point six three net impact to general fund balance. Our mid-year adjustments would be increasing or decreasing our deficit, so we would end with an operating surplus of eighty-two thousand and then about six million general fund deficit overall. So general fund revenues, what we're looking at over here is the budget adjustments in the far right column. So we're looking at a two hundred fifty thousand dollar decrease to sales use tax. That's based on HDL projections. We have, we're reducing Measure HH transaction tax by about a hundred thousand for, just based on activity. On use of money and property, we're adding seventy-five thousand there. That's for a new lease agreement with the Bouchard property, and we have changed our banking, so that it used to be a credit earned account. It's now going to be a sweep into an interest bearing, so we're going to incur some additional fees, but we're going to make up for it with interest, is what we project. For other revenues, we're looking at eighty-four thousand increase. That is mostly to recovery of expense as well as waste disposal agreement, which came in a little bit higher than it did last year. Departmental increases, we're looking at twenty-eight thousand for community development, which is primarily for zoning compliance letters and zoning permits. Public Works is three hundred ninety-three thousand increase, and that's for permits, plan checks, and various engineering fees. For fire, we're looking at a hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase for ambulance service and hazardous materials fees. Police, it's a two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar increase. That is, the bulk of that's for the Garden Grove Unified School District. We have an SRO going out there, so that's our reimbursement coming back to us. We also have CSI lab equipment and some fines and fees. And then finally, community services, a small seven thousand increase for some rents and drop-in fees and Fountain Valley Community Foundation donation. Moving on to expenditures, we're looking at an increase from Human Resources, fifty thousand for legal services. Community development, we have forty-three thousand for its contract for general plan update that was carried over from last fiscal year, as well as fifteen thousand for community outreach. We also have five thousand for economic development, which is the broker fees for that Bouchard lease agreement. Finance is increasing twelve thousand. That's to cover the additional bank fees we talked about. Public Works is an increase of sixty, that, almost sixty-one thousand. That's for educational meetings, office supplies, a contracted inspector, and assistance for post-construction inspections. For fire, we have a hundred and twenty-six thousand increase. That is forty-five thousand for fire suppression, which is broken down into employee physicals, training, safety apparel, and PPE. And eighty thousand for ambulance, which offsets the revenue I mentioned earlier for ambulance services, surge usage, gasoline, and also our opioid budget. We moved out of the general fund into our opioid fund so we can use that restricted money to purchase things like Narcan. And then, let's see, please, police, we have a hundred and seven thousand for academy recruits, homeless encampment cleanup, donation expenses, and drone maintenance. And then eighteen thousand is for CSI lab equipment, which is going to be reimbursed through Prop sixty-nine, as well as Shop With A Cop donation expenses. And then lastly would be recreation and community services. Their increase is thirty-eight thousand, and that's for social services support, which used to be funded by COVID-related CDBG funds. That's now eliminated. Internal service funds, we're looking at adding forty thousand for the IT fund, and that's for a new senior IT analyst position. We have two hundred and fifty-two thousand for government buildings. That's going to include sports park, pony restroom. We had a hundred fifty thousand dollar contract that we awarded last year. It was carried over, but was omitted from the budget, which also thirty thousand for porpoies. And then we have the Fountain Valley Sports Park tennis courts resurfacing and fencing for the Bouchard property. For fleet, that sixty-five thousand dollar increase is for two Trail Blazers for the police department. For capital equipment, twenty thousand dollar increase, that's for fire department turnout gear and SWAT vest for the police department. Then we have self-insurance. Those are mainly activity-based increases, so it's five hundred ninety-six thousand. It's spread across third-party claims, workers' comp liability claims, settlement payments, and other legal fees. And then looking at other funds here, so the water fund, we're looking at adding one point nine, almost two million, to revenue in the water fund and seven hundred eighty-one thousand in operating expenses. That's mainly because we're seeing that our current budget, activity is higher than currently budgeted. So for that one, for water, it's mostly metered and reclaimed water and meter charges. On the flip side, we have meter register replacements in operating and also increased water usage. For sewer, we're increasing revenues a hundred and six thousand, operating by twenty thousand. That's mainly for sewer fees on the revenue side. We have camel truck repair parts for the expenses, and we have sewer rehab design work. Solid waste, we have the majority of the increase of the nine hundred and thirty-one thousand is going to be for refuse service fees. This has higher activity. We also have a beverage grant and neighborhood cleanup. Those are both expenses that are offset by equal revenues. There was a grant that was awarded last year. We just weren't able to spend it, so it's been sitting there. And then we have the OPEB trust. That's two million. It's recorded as an expense, but it's not technically an expense. It's really a transfer between bank accounts, and Ryan can go into that in more detail. Fountain Valley Housing Authority, we have an additional forty-seven thousand for navigation center operating costs. That's a bill that we already paid, but it came in higher than we budgeted. Then we have the opioid settlement. That's a twenty thousand increase, and that will allow us to use opioid settlement funds we've been receiving that are restricted for certain purposes, so we can purchase those supplies and going forward. Criminal diversion, small increases, grant, OTS grant, they're getting an inverter generator and then offsetting revenue and expense for RSVP donations. Measure M two, that increase is seventy-seven thousand, and that is for capital. That's the Measure M portion of the Euclid Condor and Talbert Bouchard signal modification. And then all of this is, and that's partially offset by the CIP, which is overall reduction of four hundred nineteen thousand, is what we're looking at. And that came out of five hundred and thirty-five thousand savings from the PD locker room, as well as two hundred and thirty thousand savings from the UAP. We're adding fifty thousand for fiber optic design for Fire Station Two. And then a hundred and thirty-six thousand extra for Ellison Warner Road Rehab. And that was mainly because the amount that they projected, when we did the budget, they didn't end up spending as much last year as they thought they would. So we're kind of carrying it over. And then thirty-eight thousand extra for Talbert and Euclid Road Rehab.
Actually, a quick question for you on this. So you have the change in fund balance. Maybe I missed it.
Yeah.
Do we have what the fund balance is, what the current levels are?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we can get that for you.
Okay. I mean, it's great that these fund balances are going up, going down, but it doesn't really tell me what the existing, like, are we over-reserving? Are we under-reserved?
Yeah. All right. If nothing else, I'm going to pass it off to Ryan. Thank you.
All right. So one of the biggest expenses in the general fund additions in the mid-year budget is the transfer to the OPEB trust. So we are transferring two million dollars of general fund money to the OPEB trust, and this isn't a real expense, as you would traditionally think of an expense. It's what we're, we're not really paying somebody else, as you would traditionally think of an expense. We're transferring funds from one city-held bank account to another city-held account. But due to accounting standards, we have to account for these funds in different funds in the city accounting. So since they're in different funds, we have to treat it as an expense in the general fund and a revenue in the OPEB fund. So as such, it's a two million dollar expense in the general fund. So you see it as a two million dollar expense there, and we're transferring it into the OPEB fund. And so back in October, we brought an update to our valuation for OPEB and pension, and the OPEB valuation at that time was thirty-nine point seven million was our OPEB liability. And OPEB is our other post-employment benefits. These are the healthcare for retirees with the city. So employees that were hired by the city prior to, I believe, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, have healthcare benefits that go on past their retirement, and this creates a liability on the city past their retirement. So the city has to fund these liabilities. And currently, those liabilities are thirty-nine point seven million. So as of December twenty twenty-four, we have fifteen point three million in our OPEB trust account. So that gives us a thirty-eight point, a thirty-eight percent funded status compared to last year's valuation of thirty-nine point seven million liabilities. So making these transfers into our trust will help us offset those liabilities and put us in a better financial position to make sure that we're able to make those obligations into the future. And it'll just keep increasing, and this is something we want to keep budgeting in the future. And it'll kind of have a twofold effect. We'll increase our funded status, but as we do this, our actuaries will actually lower the discount rate that they put on our, when they calculate our liability, which will have an effect of kind of lowering the liability that they calculate. So as we continue to make payments, it will also help lower our liability. So it kind of has a twofold effect of making these trust transfers. So this is something that we want to continue to do into the future. Another part of the mid-year budget is we had a request to add one full-time senior information technology analyst in the IT department, and this is an addition of a one FTE position with the city. Has an annual cost of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then we also had two requested reclassifications, one in the finance department with a payroll specialist position that had an annualized cost of five thousand, and one in the engineering department with a reclassification to a senior civil engineer position with an annualized cost of seventeen thousand. With these, with it, especially when we add a, an additional FTE to our kind of position list with the cities, we want to make sure that we're understanding the long-term effects of adding another position. Typically, we don't do a twenty-year plan with the mid-year budget, but since we are adding a position, we wanted to run a twenty-year plan to make sure we're understanding what those long-term effects would be. So with the budget this year, we did, with the mid-year budget, we did run a twenty-year plan, just to make sure that we're able to support adding another position in our long-term plan. And when we put the mid-year budget into the twenty-year plan, with our added revenues that we put in there, we actually had a projected operating surplus increase to one point six million. million. And when, in twenty thirty-seven, thirty-eight, when Measure HH sunsets, and that's kind of that target year that we keep looking at, when Measure HH goes away and we kind of lose that, what currently is about seventeen million dollars in revenue each year. So the next steps after tonight, so fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five will end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. After tonight, we're going to begin looking towards fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. On March eighteenth, we're going to come back with a study session to look at a biennial budget process before council, and we'll discuss what that would look like and see if that's something council would be interested in seeing for the next budget cycle. Shortly, the next day after that, we're going to kick off our budget cycle for the next year, whether that's a budget, a biennial budget cycle or our traditional annual budget cycle. And then May sixth, we'll be returning to council with a budget workshop, and the proposed budget will be coming on June third. So with that, staff is available for any questions.
Okay. Well, before we go into some questions, Mr. City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Okay. My colleagues, do we have, anybody have any questions? Okay. Councilmember Harper.
A question. One of the items on there is a reduction in the revenues from sales tax. Can you talk about the trends that you're seeing, you know, maybe quarter over quarter with regards to sales tax revenue? Because that's a big part of the city's revenue.
Sure. So a couple areas that we're seeing, reductions in sales tax, and it's across statewide is where they're seeing it. It's, it's in the retail sales, you know, brick and mortar sales is where they're seeing the reduction, and that's statewide. And then also gasoline is where we're seeing reductions. And that's primarily, gas is cheaper now than it was a year ago. So when gas is cheaper, we're getting less sales tax from gas. So the good thing is we're paying less for gas. The bad thing is we're getting less sales tax from it. So.
Yeah, we're seeing that. I also sit on the Board of OCTA, and the projections there are for flat or declining sales tax. So people are, seem like they're being a little more cautious with their spending, and that has an impact on city revenue. So something to watch over the next, the next year, definitely. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for putting this together. That was really detailed report. I'm glad to see that we're able to put another two million dollars into the OPEB liability, and that's, I know, one of the things when we passed HH is we wanted to make sure that any, I don't want excess funds, but any funds we can set aside, we do when we can. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions? Okay. Councilmember Grandis.
Yeah. Thanks, Ryan. Great report. So a couple things. One, for the OPEB payment, do you know what the reserve balance is at this point?
For the OPEB?
Yeah.
It's fifteen point three, I think, is what.
So a little.
Fifteen point three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Great. So that's, and you said the, right, so we're about twenty-four point four short of funding. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I'm just curious, too, that two million, did we take that just out of general fund, or did we take it out of HH on the general fund?
That'll be coming out of HH. That'll be used HH funds to pay down that, those liabilities.
Okay. I'm sure they'll be glad to hear that. So I just want to make sure that was clear. And then we had comments from Libby earlier that were probably better suited for this agenda item than the fire truck. But when we go into the budgeting going forward, there were a lot of federal potential cuts, and I want to make sure that some of the things that were mentioned were the Navigation Center, Meals on Wheels, veterans, et cetera, senior programs. Do we have an easy way of figuring out which programs that we get either trickled down through federal or not?
Well, just for an example, so our, the budget that we're doing here is about eighty million. We just got done doing our, our financial report for last year, and we're required to do a, what's called a single audit, which is an audit of all our federal funds that we use during an annual fiscal year if we spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand. And we were not required to do that last year because we did not spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand. So out of our eighty million dollar budget, we didn't spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds last year. So it's not a significant portion of our budget.
And he, since you, it sounds like you already worked on that. Do you have a ballpark of where maybe that fell? You don't have to insert now.
I don't know. I don't know the exact number, but it was less than seven hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
Okay. I just think that we should be careful going into the budgeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Konstantin?
Yeah, I want to say, Ryan, and thank you so much for, for your efforts on this. And I want to say to people out there listening to the news media with the soundbites, they sound awfully tempting, and be sure to hear the updates, too, so you have the most current information. Thank you. Because this administration is doing really well with the wasteful crap, potentially.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Konstantin, for your comments. Ryan, you mentioned that by adding two million into the OPEB paydown, it would help bring down the discount rate, right? Is there a particular or special formula or percentage you would like to see in the long-term goal?
For the funded status?
Correct.
Well, you know, ultimately, we'd like to make sure that we get completely funded with our, our OPEB liabilities to make sure that the city can meet its obligations. So we're going to keep pushing towards that hundred percent funded status, you know, over time. Obviously, we can't get there this year or next year, but we want to keep moving in that direction over time.
Well, you say a hundred percent. That's, that's pretty tough. Based on your experience, have any city that you know of have a hundred percent?
Well, it depends on, every city is different on their OPEB liabilities. You know, not every city has OPEB liabilities. They don't have the, the post-employment benefits for retirees. So it just depends city to city on how much benefit is given to retirees.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for your presentations. Any my other fellow comments to make? No? Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve by Councilmember Konstantin. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Vice Mayor Kinnon. Please vote. After Mr. City Clerk.
Item number eight passes five zero.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. The next item on the agenda is we're going to go to Mr. Presentation by our City Clerk, Mr. Rick Miller.
The fun continues. Here we go. More appointments.
Do you have extra, extra copies for us?
Do we have enough paper? Got a couple. Just a few. We're gonna, we're gonna hope we don't go more than eight rounds here. You all have ballots up there on the dais. The first committee that we'll be voting for will be the Fountain Valley Community Foundation. There are a total of ten applicants. You can select up to five. There are five seats up for appointment. Once you finish filling out your ballot, please sign it and bring it up to me, and I will tabulate the results.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'll, I'll once again thank all of the people that applied for the various positions. We got, it was great to have people turn out and apply, and really great applicants and people that want to participate and care a lot about Fountain Valley. So thank you very much, and good luck.
Well, look at that. We did it on the first shot. Okay. So I'll announce who's been appointed and by the vote tabulation. With five votes, Elena Hohen has been appointed to the Community Foundation. With four votes, both Jane Iovine and Barbara Montz have been appointed. And with three votes, Larry Crandall and Susan Castellanos have been appointed to the Fountain Valley Community Foundation. That is that. So congratulations to those individuals. Next, we will vote for the Housing and Community Development Committee. There are three seats up for appointment and four applicants. Once again, fill out your ballot, sign it, and turn it in to me, and I will announce the results. Did I get yours? Oh. Right here.
My apologies.
All righty. And we're done on this one, too. With five votes, both Kristin Escona and Brian Noble are reappointed to the H, are appointed to the HCD Committee. And with four votes, Prem Balani is appointed to the Housing and Community Development Committee, which leaves us to our final one, being the Measure HH Advisory Committee.
May I actually propose something on this one? We have two gentlemen, and there's two different categories. The first category is voted against Measure HH, and then the second one, where the first gentleman is also eligible. My recommendation, since I, you know, been a part of this committee ever since, maybe not on the committee, I don't mean it that way, but following along, as we move further away from the committee being implemented, it may be harder to potentially get somebody that voted against Measure HH. So my request would be, I mean, obviously, with two votes here, two candidates, if we could vote for them at large instead of the, the other category being voted against Measure HH. Do you see my point?
Yeah, the question, would that require a change in the ordinance or?
That would require us changing the bylaws of the committee.
Of the committee, not the ordinance itself?
Correct. You know what? I'm not sure that it's in the ordinance. I'd have to check. I know it was put in the bylaws. If it's in the ordinance, too, then we would need an ordinance change.
Okay.
I believe we may have referenced the bylaws in the ordinance. So if one changes, then the other.
Okay. Just two people. But there's only two candidates, so.
My apologies. Two. Sorry.
So is it going to matter, then, which way?
Why don't you, why don't you make that on the council for future consideration? Yep.
One person cannot occupy two seats.
Well, no, I get that. I'm not trying to make it difficult.
The results, Jeffrey Stone has been reappointed to the Measure HH Advisory Committee as the resident who voted against Measure HH, and the resident at large seat will go to Feman Dogar. So these seats run for a term of three years. And that is all. And at the next meeting, we will do our final appointments of the Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities, with those interviews being conducted this Thursday. And that is all. Thank you.
Okay. So this time around was a much smoother process. I'm glad to hear that. Okay. So I'm going ahead and bringing back the strategic, strategic plan items presented by our community director, Rob Brazil.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one request to speak on unscheduled matters, and I believe the gentleman has been waiting for a little while.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Gilbert Diaz.
All right.
Talk about was the green belt safety. I came to talk about it about a couple months ago, just that there's a lot of kids that, that transit the green belt between Santa Maria and Santa Lucia, crossing over to Fulton. They cross during the green belt. There's a lot of cars going forty-five, fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. It's really dangerous. I brought it up two months ago. Somebody was, I'm not sure if it was the city manager, commented that they're working on a solution. I did get a call from the city manager's office, but they said the solution is on Talbert, not on Slater. So what I'm asking you guys is if you guys can do, implement the same solution you have in Talbert to Slater, where you implement a island that breaks the, the crosswalk, the crossing of the street into two. That way, you know, kids, seniors, people who use the green belt can divide the crossing into two, making it more safer. Also, I believe islands kind of slow down the traffic a little bit, because in the mornings, if you ever, if you ever just, I usually walk my son to, to the other side of the street. If you just look at the traffic flows, everybody's running late to, to work, everybody's running late to school, and they're just barreling through that Slater road. And it's only a matter of time before, God forbid, one of these kids gets hurt. So I usually walk the green belt. I walk it all the way down to, you know, from, from, from Slater to Ellis. I do notice that on Talbert, they have those islands. You can split your, your crossing in two. And generally, I notice that it's a slower pattern because of the islands. They force the drivers to pay more attention, slow down a little bit. So I'm asking if, if we can implement a similar solution that we have in Talbert to Slater. And I believe prior to the pandemic, there was talk about adding islands to Slater. I just, I'd never heard anything else after that. So just any comments on that, anything you guys can do just to increase the safety on Slater between Santa Maria and Santa Lucia on the green belt? That's all.
Okay. Unfortunately, Mr. Diaz, as you know, this is an unscheduled matter, therefore, we can't comment on it. However, please reach out to our city manager or staff. We'd be more happy to facilitate your concern, and thank you for bringing out your attention.
I did reach out. There's no solution in place, so that's why I'm bringing it up again.
I see. Okay. All right. We'll look into it. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any items for future considerations?
Mr. Mayor, are we not going to do the other items?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm hard to miss. Thank you, council member, Council team, for reminding me of that. Thank you. Okay, one more presentation from our, Director, Rob Brazil.
Thank you, Mayor Bowie, and council members. I appreciate the opportunity, um, and thanks you for, uh, yeah, it would've been a tight fit, and we wouldn't have much discussion available, uh, after the previous study session. So I appreciate the opportunity tonight. Uh, we have a three-year goal. Maintain, build, and modernize infrastructure to support growth and future needs of the city. Um, at the September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four City Council Strategic Planning Session, the following objective was assigned to myself, the Community Services Director. Present recommendations on an electronic message board at the entrance to the Fountain Valley Recreation Center and a permanent bandstand in the park. Why at the sports park, the, the locations were identified here. It's long been recognized as the meeting place of our community. You know, we don't have a large downtown like some other cities. And it's typically where our community gatherings, um, community meetings, special events, third parties, concerts in the park, movies in the park, youth leagues, it all kind of happens right there at the sports park. And so, um, we identified a, a few locations that, that we'll present to you here for these possible strategic plan items. First, firstly, for the Digital Reader Board, um, the proposed location is the most obvious one, where we currently do our signage. At the corner of Brookhurst and Heil. It's where the vast majority of the, the city enters, or our, our community enters, the sports park. Right now, um, we do utilize that location. We hang two, three-foot-tall-by-fourteen-foot-wide banners. We typically do them on a two-week cycle. So, um, while that is nice, you know, obviously, a digital billboard can rotate, um, at a faster pace with more information on there. And, um, it's not stagnant for the two, two weeks, um, and you can get more education out to the community. But this does work well for its purpose right now. What, the way we currently, um, notice events and programs and services at that location is it's either got to be a city-hosted, city-co-hosted, or an event supporting the city in some fashion. So, um, typically, like, you'll see, like, an AYSO Youth League or, or an upcoming special event. So, Digital Reader Board opportunities, um, I, we did get some pricing, but, and, and I'll share that with you on the next slide. But, um, uh, basically, uh, you can see two opportunities we did get here for, um, they're basically, well, this one is, I'll tell you the exact size, I won't tell you. Basically, it's six foot, six inches, um, tall by nine feet wide. And it's really two vision boards stacked on top of each other. They're basically the same, um, um, digital board there on the bottom. But it's customizable to match your fit and theme of the location that you want to go with. And I just included a, um, a picture there of what our entrance and our, and our, and our split-face rocking and, and tile facing looks like with the tin roof. So, we could obviously do something along those lines. This is tonight to facilitate, um, conversation and direction, if this is something that we do want to look into. And, so, the pricing we got for that was approximately ninety thousand dollars, eighty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. We would obviously go out to RFP if this is something that we would want to do and facilitate the, the correct municipal process. But this was good to get a ballpark price range. This doesn't include electrical work, and there would obviously be a cost related to that. But, um, we do have, um, electricity available out there. And the vast majority of this would be actually ran off solar power. But we would need some electrical connections. But, again, just to go back to that, so basically ninety thousand dollars for a one-sided, um, vision board. If you see, I'll go back to my other slide, it's not really an opportunity at that location to have a two-sided, because you'd have it turned against the street. Nobody would really see it as they drive by. You want to have it be angled. But it's also about half the price when you only do it on one side, so it's not a bad deal. Next is the permanent bandstand location. We identified currently, before there's any, um, park expansion plans or discussion through the Parks Master Plan of any additional locations for, um, something like a bandstand. The current identified location would be here at the Great Lawn. That's on the right-hand screen, um, and then that's obviously a concert in the park on the Great Lawn. Annually, uh, the city hosts the Summer Concert Series, um, every Thursday in July. Movies in the Park and multiple other city-hosted and third-party-hosted events at the Great Lawn. It does have a nice concave bowl that makes, um, makes seating and access terrific at that location for somewhat of a raised stage concrete area up there for, for bands. Now, um, it's a terrific, it's been terrifically successful for large, um, special events there. Again, we have twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred people. But that, um, success does present some financial and logistical challenges. And that's related to the setup of those stage, um, the cost of the stage, the lighting, the sound. So ultimately, we average about six thousand to sixty-five hundred dollars for all of that per special event. And this upcoming summer, we'll have five concerts. So, um, we'll be spending somewhere in the range of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars, um, on stage light and sound. And so, looking at the opportunity for a potential, um, uh, permanent bandstand with some of that built-in could provide a long-term cost savings. And then additionally, when third-party rentals do rent that location at the Great Lawn, that can be a prohibitive cost for them wanting to do a stage or a special event. So, we do see the opportunity for a lot more rentals, um, if there was a, a permanent bandstand out there. Our, our goal would, to be honestly, um, to do a raised concrete stage, um, that's inside one of the bandstands, so that we don't obviously have to rent the stages each time, build an ADA pathway and stairs. But I can show you some examples here shortly. So, this is, is, we received a quote from, uh, multiple companies, um, and we got, um, there, there's any, any size, shape, style that you would want to do in a bandstand. This is just some, um, other municipal locations that, that they had thought fit for similar sizing for what we have at the Recreation Center. The middle one, I liked a lot because it has the opportunity. Well, that one did, um, they, they did naming rights on that one. And it could, it, that's definitely an opportunity. But it's gonna, it's gonna vary size and shape, the type of materials that are used. And, and ultimately, the pricing for the permanent bandstands range from seventy dollars per square foot to two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per square foot. And again, it's just the materials and the type of, um, uh, materials that are used for the building of it. Obviously, these ones, some of them have nice wood backings and raised concrete platforms, and then split-face rocking on it, um, rock facing on it. The average cost for the bandstands we saw was approximately a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. But the higher price at two-hundred-and-twenty-five, um, dollars per square foot did get over three-hundred thousand dollars. However, that does only include the professional engineer drawings, the columns, beams, roof decking, and the things that you see over there. Any additional concrete pads, um, the labor, the freight and unloading of, of whatever those materials are. So we anticipate the full cost of a project of something like this to be in the four-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollar range. But, again, this is for your information on, on what the, the costing is for, um, an item like this. And we're happy to take your direction on looking at, um, future options. We have also looked at mobile bandstands in the state, um, in the past. They're also called showmobiles, if you've seen the one in Garden Grove, um, or Huntington Beach. The nice thing about, um, showmobiles is that they cost less. They, we looked at them in about two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two previously, um, and they were just over a hundred thousand dollars. They have a lot of different elements, and they can get over two hundred thousand dollars, depending on the, the, the equipment, the LED lights, the speakers, and everything that you want to do with them. So there is great opportunity with it, and, um, so I just put together a little pros and cons list. Huntington Beach and Garden Grove, Grove both have them, and I've personally worked with them both in the past. If you are moving them to lots of different locations, it's a great, um, opportunity to have concerts in multiple different parks, locations, rent it out. There is some revenue opportunity. However, we typically don't use our other parks in that fashion, because they're smaller neighborhood parks and don't really, um, support the parking needs of, like, a large special event. And so we typically hold all of our, um, larger special events at one location. And, uh, that's not the main use. It's not to say you couldn't use that for, uh, a mobile bandstand for that. But the preference would be more likely to have a permanent bandstand, um, if you're only going to be using it in one location. There's also vehicle storage for this, uh, maintenance and maintenance costs related to the hydraulics. And it's gonna live outside, um, and so it's, uh, being a oceanfront or oceannear community, um, things do deteriorate. And then, um, the stage is also a little bit smaller. So you can see the performance dimensions here is twenty-eight feet wide by six and a half, um, feet. There is a stage that folds out off the center part, and it gets up another eight feet. So you're talking about a fourteen-foot stage. It's decent. It's just not really large for some of the larger concerts. I know for Summer Fest, we do a twenty-by-twenty stage. And so, um, it's a little bit smaller if it's gonna be our permanent solution, uh, but it is definitely an option. Lastly, uh, we could look in, or we should look into revenue and cost-sharing opportunities, so we just put together some of those here. Obviously, advertisement revenue, um, on the digital billboard, um, that's absolutely something that we could look at doing. And then also, developers' agreements. We had, um, had those discussions in the past with other companies and, and developers that have been in the, um, coming into the community, see if it's something that they would like to facilitate. Naming rights, um, we see the bandstand as a perfect opportunity for, for naming rights. I'd be a little bit more cautious on the, um, naming rights to the marquee out front, because it would kind of lend to that's, um, the actual naming rights for the whole sports park. And if we wanted to do that with somebody, I think it would, um, be a much higher price. We had, we had talked about that previously, being, uh, around two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred thousand dollars a year with other businesses. So if somebody was willing to do that, um, we could discuss that, and, and it could obviously be on that. But as you see here in this picture, naming a bandstand and, um, finding a local business that, that would like to do the naming rights would be a great, um, revenue opportunity. Concert and, and event rentals, we would see, I think, with the permanent bandstand and a permanent stage in a bandstand, I think we would see far more rentals out there, um, than we currently do without those additional setup costs. Reduced operating costs, again, we, we spend about six thousand dollars every time we do a large special event out there for the stage and setup. And then lastly, tying it into the Parks Master Plan. I don't really see the connection for the digital screen as part of the Parks Master Plan, because typically, after you intensify or increase usage of a specific location, I do see it as an opportunity for, um, a permanent bandstand, um, to support the special events needs in, in our, in our main focal point, park. So, um, the opportunity to tie the bandstand into the Parks Master Plan and then use park fees to support it is an option. So, um, with that, uh, that was a lot of quick information. I apologize. But, um, we request that City Council give us direction on the presented recommendations for the message board and, uh, the permanent bandstand in the park. We can either bring more information forward, um, or, um, answer any questions you may have.
Okay, uh, anybody have any comments to make? Okay, council member Harper?
Uh, thanks for, thanks for this information, um, for the, starting with the mess, message board. I guess I would, had envisioned that, instead of doing it on the corner, that you do it kind of on the entrance to the sports park and have a two-sided, uh, board there, you know, where the, right now, I think it just says Fountain Valley Sports Park, but you could.
On, on the other side of the entrance, um, at Brookhurst and Heil, towards the Boys and Girls Club, is that where you're?
Uh, yeah, so go back to the other, uh,
Oops, sorry.
Okay, so here, so if you, if you, like, if you go to the right of that, where you enter the sports park, there's, you know, on the median there. That's, that's where I expect to have this. And then you have two-sided, and people can see it from both directions.
But the only people would, the backside, they'd only see it when they're leaving the park?
No, 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 it'd be, um, perpendicular to Brookhurst.
Mr. Mayor?
You know what I mean?
Yeah, so I mean, that, that's exactly what the, the discussion's about tonight, is so ultimately, it's about double the price if you want a two-sided, or was probably a little less than double, so it's probably looking at about a hundred-and-sixty, a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. So, that's just for dual-sided, um, screens?
Okay, that seems kind of expensive, but, um, but that's, I, that, that's kind of what I would, if we do a, a reader board or a message board, I think that's, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
Okay, council member, Council team?
So, Rob, back in, I know I'm gonna go there, but I do love the idea. So let me preface this, digital reader board, electronic message board, this concept I like. The other one's not so much. But, do you remember back in, oh, no, you weren't with us?
I was. I think you're gonna say that somebody was gonna throw one in?
Yeah, clear channels. So twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, I remember that. But I don't remember where it was gonna be, but I do.
It was gonna go right there.
This one?
They were, they were gonna put one at the, there was proposal to have it included at the sports park.
Well, I knew that. I just didn't know if it was, yeah, I don't like, really, I, I really like council member Harper's idea. Could it be, um, I, I really like the idea of a two-sided.
Yeah, we, we absolutely could do a two-sided.
Because there's so much traffic on Brookhurst.
It is. I think, um, if it's something that we would want to consider further, um, I think, um, going out there and looking at the location. If something is, um, parallel to the street, sometimes it's harder to see when you're driving quickly there on Brookhurst. And, and a kind of, uh, a catty corner to the street, you'll be able to see it better when you're driving up to it.
No, it's not parallel.
Not parallel, perpendicular.
So you drive, so this?
Oh, I got you. Okay, at the end of where, at the end of the, the, that sign right there, the top right sign?
Is this the sign where you?
That's right at the entrance.
Yeah, so that's where it would be. So you put it on top, you could replace the sign, you can do something, yeah.
Is it, is there any way you could do some kind of renderings, and we see both options visually-wise? My concern is, I, I understand the, the idea of that. My concern is too deep inside. So, it's like, you gotta real look deep inside to be able to see it, and is that going to be, you gotta turn heads? I don't know, the risks of that. So, perhaps you could do a rendering, so we could look at it and, and.
Or you can do one of those overarching things and put it right in the center of Brookhurst.
I'll agree.
I, I actually agree with, uh, council member Harper as well, that I'd like to see a two-sided board. Or maybe both corners, because you got, you have to be able to see it going down Brookhurst. Um, and more than just one side, because you would just see it if you were traveling north, um, where it is. I think this is a great idea. I think it's also a lot safer than what we're doing. Because for a lot of the events, we put that, that temporary electronic sign in the street.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that. It would also free up, free up the public works, um, uh, sign board that goes out regularly. And other times, they've had to go and remove it with an emergency, when there's been issues in the, in the other parts of the city.
Yeah, that's, and I think it's dangerous. The other thing is, I'd like to, uh, you know, we have, whether we like it or not, we're getting some new housing, uh, into there, and their eight thousand dollars per unit goes into the park fund. So for the Slater Investments Project alone, I think we're getting one-point-eight, one-point-nine million eventually. That has to be used for parks, so I, I see the funding of both of these items available through, you know, potentially park funds that are coming relatively soon.
Yes, so there's two ways you can do it. If you do it as part of the master plan, and these are identified in there as part of the master plan process to support that new general plan, you can spend any of that money, um, because the nexus has already been created with the items, um, and the general plan. If we want to do it before, um, Colin can maybe answer it better. But there needs to be a legal nexus between, um, the, the, the property, the fees, and what we're, the project that we're doing.
Well, I trust Colin can make that happen. Even if we do, like, a loan out of the general fund to the park fund, like we've done for other items, I think it would be good. That would be reimbursed. I'm sure you could figure that out.
We could do that, yeah, we could do a loan.
Good. Alright, um, I'm sorry, I had one other thing. For the stage, first off, I, I am really in favor of the stage. I remember I was traveling in Ohio, I think it was, and sent you the photos, like, oh my gosh, this would be great here. I don't see that photo on here, but these, these are, these are really good.
These are actually from quotes?
Yeah, yeah, no, these are good, too. I like it. I, I don't like the idea of a temporary stage. I think that's, uh, that won't work for what we need it for. Predominantly what we need it for. And I'd like to see something permanent there as well. So, uh, one question I did have was, with the dollar values you were talking about, what about speakers and all that? Is that included?
That's not included in that, so there'd be costs associated with that for speakers, lighting, um, and anything else that we needed. So, there's, there's further work that needs to go into getting a full quote, obviously, and these are just renderings that they've done other. and these are just renderings that they've done other places. They would come out in size and fit something directly for what we have out there. So we'd look to include all of that, so.
Well, again, I think we have the funding for it. I think we have the funding identified for it, and I think we have a need for both of these, so I would like to suggest you move forward.
Okay, first of all, do anybody else have any comments to make?
Yeah, Mayor, couple comments. So, yeah, I think the double-sided reader board makes a lot more sense. Would be concerned that it does get enough visibility along Brookhurst, so maybe seeing some renderings and how to maximize the visual field of that, that would be great.
I think, not to interrupt you, what we could easily do is get some banners made up and put them in a location, and we could go out and see for ourselves, right? And we drive down the street and check it out, and that's the best way to see it.
Yeah, that would be good. In regards to the stage, one of the things to consider is, and it's really important for performers, is the height of the stage. So if you look at the mobile one, they're showing three and a half feet. On these permanent ones, these aren't quite as high. And so, you know, you have an issue with just building a foundation, but making sure that it's high enough for the performers, so that they're getting to that maximum audience appeal.
Absolutely.
But, but that does increase costs, it does increase foundational issues. So we have, I think we have to be careful about that. But these look a little bit short.
Yeah, yeah. We also do, it is a raised stage, because the bowl goes down at the Great Lawn as well, but we obviously take that all into consideration. We'd reach out to the user groups in the community that would be using something like this to see what their specifics are, and similar at Summer Fest, find out what those highs, height of those stages are.
Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Constantine?
Yes, I forgot to comment on the bandstand. I do like the permanent bandstand, and I think the design is going to be key. That's it, thank you so much. I'm really excited.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think one thing we've tried to maintain the whole time out there at the Fountain Valley Sports Park is a, is a common theme to all the buildings and styling and that split-face rocking, green tin roof, color, color pattern, so anything we would do out there would tie in naturally.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You have a question.
Go ahead.
One more point. So I know that the Great Lawn is kind of what you proposed here, but what about, you know, where we do the movie in the park, is that, is that a, would that be a good location to consider as well?
So that's a soccer field, so we'd be losing a soccer field if we did that, but we can always consider anything. And if we look at it and see a better way to lay out a soccer field, obviously, we would take that all into consideration while we're doing it, but that is a youth soccer field.
I understand we may be getting some more acres for the sports park, that we could potentially move the sports.
Yeah, but we're down on topic for tonight, so we can't talk about that. Thank you for bringing that up, though. All right, anybody else have any more comments?
I do.
Okay, City Manager, Mike Ewing?
So I want to get some clarification. First of all, I think we heard that City Council would support, you know, the digital messaging and also the permanent bandstand. What I would like to get clarification is that we are okay in holding you this off as part of the Park Master Plan. The reason why I'm saying that is because, as Rob stated, there's some nexus, and we'll be able to utilize parking lieu to cover the expense. What is before you is not the full extent of the cost of both the digital messaging and also the bandstand. There's a lot more that ties into that in regards to the foundation, there's engineering work that needs to, you know, look into the design and so forth. So approximate of $300,000 bandstand, I don't think is the actual dollar yet, and then the messaging sign, depending how that plays out. So if City Council okay, we can go ahead and include it in the Park Master Plan. Through that process, we may have an opportunity to, once the county approved the additional acreage, we can look at as a whole and see if, you know, the Great Lawn is a perfect location, or is there another avenue for us to consider? But the end goal is, you know, will we have the financial to support this project?
All right, well, thank you so much for that, I was going to mention that, so I'm glad you brought it up. So my input on the digital reading board, you know, I think it's a great idea. It'll give park recreational the flexibility for any upcoming event, so I think that's a wonderful idea. But I like, still want to see the both side as a rendering, so to be able to see, like you say, you put a sign, go out and visit it. I think that way we could physically see how, which position would be best to position the digital sign. Now, reference to the permanent bandstand, and I agree with my Vice Mayor, Keneen, that the height, what I'm seeing here is an issue, therefore, the number that you're proposing here is going to change. And I do agree that we should, so I'm guessing what we are approving today is to whether we want to add this as part of the master plan. That I'm okay, but not approving the project itself, because I don't know what's going to entail, and what is going to be the final product. My only comment that I like to make versus a permanent bandstand versus the mobile, if you recall in, back in 2020, I did the Walk of Vietnam, we didn't have a stage up there, so we rent, I mean, the club, the organization rented a mobile showmobile, I think that's what you call it, from Garden Grove. And come to find out when they were renting that, actually, there was, it was real hard to get it, because many other cities wanted to rent their showmobile. So to me, that's revenue. If we're not utilizing it, the month that we don't have anything going on throughout the year, other cities could be renting it. So to me, it makes sense to me. But I think at that time, if my recollections is, I think the cost, I think at that time, you compare the cost, and you say it was too much, and I say, well, in the long run, it'll be cheaper, because if we keep renting, you know, the stage that we've been doing over the years, it costs, as you said earlier, that's why we have to do permanent. But I would, that's my preference. And the open band, stage also, we're going to be prone to, I don't know who, but anybody could go up there and play up there, when we're not operating, you know. Versus the mobile, versus the mobile, it could be closed and locked. So that's, that's another good point to think about, given the height, three feet, that we had to be on stage, so you got to look at that, you know, that liability aspect of it. So that's my point on that. But I agree that we, you know, I think it's a great idea, but...
Actually, I want to clarify with our City Matt, what's the timing of the Park Master Plan?
So we actually had our first meeting two weeks ago. We're hoping to come to you guys in mid-April for our first meetings with Council and elected officials and key stakeholders, or key stakeholders, key stakeholders. And about 18 months from right now. Well, wrapping it up within 18 months, so we just started it.
Wow.
Yeah, let's see, I may want this sooner.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Councilmember, Council team?
I look at it this way, to me, it doesn't have anything to do with the rest of the potential land at Mile Square Park, if that all works out wonderful. This is a known area, this is our area. I say full speed ahead, and make the funding work, because it can happen. I don't, I don't say this too often. I mean, we can get it right, I mean, that's where we're going to do the concerts anyway. We don't want to, see, having more land in the park doesn't mean that we necessarily want at this point, unless we develop something else in the future for that further area away. We want to be at the Brookhurst side, we want the visibility and, I mean, this is a really good thing, but gosh, that's a long time.
Well, first of all, I think that, you know, because you don't know what's going to come in the Park Master Plan. It might be something else could be presented, even a greater space availability, that it makes more sense to have there. So why, what's the rush? I don't, you know?
We could wait, if you're coming back in April, let's see what's...
Yeah, I don't see there's a rush for it.
That's fine.
At least I'm excited, thank you.
I, I will make my recommendation that I bring back concrete numbers. My goal today was to see if there was any support, yeah, concrete height and numbers, was to see if there was support, because these are ballpark numbers. Obviously, we didn't get finalized quotes or anything, and the price for the stage, depending on exactly what we want to do out there, is going to be far greater. So the support's definitely there. I'd like to bring back concrete. It's a bad pun. More solid numbers related to what we're actually looking for.
Yeah, this is just a study session.
Exactly.
We're giving you, yeah, come on back, we're excited.
All right, we're looking forward to the next one.
So if City Council's support as well, we can include it as part of next fiscal year, '25, '26, and then depending on CFP project, and if you want to prioritize it, and if this is a priority for you, then you can make that determination. But Rob can come back and for more detailed information.
Yeah, I hope you got the clear direction?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving along, and do we have any item for considerations?
Actually, I do, just from now. Okay, let's see if I can read my notes.
All right, Councilmember Constantine?
Okay, so great idea, Councilmember Harper. So I'm proposing that we look into the parameters for members of the Measure HH Oversight Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Yeah, actually, I think it should, I think I agree, it should be general, because I don't think the difficulty, I heard this from a little bird, that the issue's not going to be finding people who voted no, it's going to be finding people who voted on it.
Right, yeah.
Eventually, it's going to be 15 years behind. We may not have enough people who apply that even were around then.
Right, no, absolutely, I agree.
That's it?
Did I get a second? Oh, good, thank you, perfect.
All right, so you have a second?
Wonderful.
Any other items?
No, I'm done.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I actually, I do have one. So, you know, last year, our fire department generated a little more than $4 million in revenue for our city. To my understanding, that we have not captured all the potential revenue available to us. So in short, we could potentially gain an additional 15% in revenue. So I would like to know if my colleague would consider second, second my request for staff to explore the possibility of establishing our own ambulance program, because currently, okay, because currently, we are operating with a hybrid program, so thank you so much, Councilmember Grenas. All right. Okay, moving along. Housing Authority, ABC, 1, 2, 3, we'll go ahead and start to my far left, Councilmember Constantine.
Okay, so just from the list that I submitted, I did attend a few Lunar New Year's events. Our AdHoc Unhoused Task Force meeting, some Green Valley Community meetings and events. I watched the Orange County Board of Supervisors meetings on the county website, and we did interview members of the Community for Housing and Community Development, Fountain Valley Community Foundation, and Measure HH Oversight Advisory Committee. And as our City Clerk, Rick, mentioned a little bit ago, that this Thursday, the 6th, I think it is, at 4:00 PM here, will be the interviews by City Council for the people that have already submitted applications for Advisory Committee for persons with disabilities. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Grenas?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so Wednesday, January 22nd, attended the OCPA Board of Directors meeting, and then I attended the Unhoused Task Force meeting. I want to really thank our Unhoused Task Force group. They are really doing a fantastic, fantastic job. I don't know if we could talk about specifics, but a lot of people who have been on the street or in the park for, in that case, decades, are not living on the streets anymore. And they are, they are very proactive, leading with compassion, but also enforcing rules to help the people who aren't accepting help on their own, and really providing help. So I have to say, Councilmember Constantine and I have been working on this board for, I don't know, three, four months now, and they are far exceeding expectations and really doing a tremendous job. So the whole group, I just want to thank all of them for doing such a great job. And then also, on Wednesday that night, I attended the OC Sanitation Steering Committee meeting, as well as then the OC Sand District Board meeting. On Thursday, January 23rd, the UCI Health Fountain Valley Board of Directors meeting, also a nonprofit hospital in our city, or two. Saturday, January 25th, Fountain Valley Lunar New Year Festival. That was a great job over at the Rec Center, we had a lot of fun. I brought my son Alex with me, and he absolutely loved it. Monday, January 27th, the Interviews for Commissions, that Councilmember Constantine mentioned. Tuesday, January 28th, was the Lunar New Year, and I attended the Advanced Beauty College TEP Festival Celebration, and great job by Tam and Lynn. And the Boys and Girls Club that evening, annual board meeting dinner. Wednesday, January 29th, Fountain Valley Community Foundation Capital Campaign, and they decided the capital campaign is going to be the expansion of the Boys and Girls Club over on Brookhurst. Then the next night, I, yeah, next afternoon, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Capital Campaign, so I'm on both capital campaigns, and they're looking to raise almost $5 million for that expansion. And let's see, Saturday, February 1st, the Westminster TEP Parade, that was so much fun, I loved that event. You know, we walked like a half mile, I think it is, it's not a terribly long parade, but it's, the people are so excited to see us there. You know, everybody waving and cheering us on, and it's just really fun, and I loved that event. On Sunday, February 2nd, the Miss Fountain Valley Scholarship Competition, and then yesterday, the Fountain Valley Schools Foundation Board Meeting. That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Vice Mayor Keneen?
Thank you, Mayor. On January 23rd, I participated in the Orange County Library Advisory Board meeting. One takeaway from the meeting was the robust discussion among several board members in regards to the newly enacted AB 1825, known as the California Freedom to Read Act, which is in response to the actions taken recently in Huntington Beach. The salient item of this act is that it prohibits restricting access to library materials. On January 25th, I joined with most of my council colleagues in the Lunar Festival held at the Recreation Center. This was very well-attended and a lot of fun, as we kicked off a week of New Year cheer. On January 27th, I joined my council colleagues interview, in the interviews of candidates for the Fountain Valley Community Foundation, Housing and Community Development Board, and Measure HH Committee. This was open to the public and was attended by an interested citizen, which we always appreciate in these open proceedings. On January 30th, I attended a virtual meeting hosted by OCPA to provide an overview of items that were presented tonight's council, and I really appreciate the team's openness to all my questions and suggestions. On February 1st, I also participated in the annual Westminster Lunar New Year Parade with most of my council colleagues, City Manager Lee and City Attorney Burns. The weather was beautiful, and it was always fun to see so many, to see how many people just love that parade and enjoy the festivities. And then lastly, on February 2nd, my wife, Mimi, and I attended the annual Miss Fountain Valley Scholarship Event at the Saigon Grand Center here in Fountain Valley. This was the first year after three consecutive years that I did not have a daughter in the, that was competing, so we were able to relax a little bit more. Congratulations to our new Miss Fountain Valley teen, 2025 Laurel Brookheiser, and Miss Fountain Valley 2025 Jacqueline Carbehall, and her three court princesses, and the, and the little princesses, right? Yes, and that concludes my report, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor Keneen. Councilmember Harper?
Thank you. On January 25th, attended the Lunar New Year Festival at the Rec Center, and good job on the Community Services Department for putting that together, it was well-attended. I think we had 400, 400 people there?
500.
500? 500 people there, okay, a lot, a lot of people. And January 27th, the OCTA Board Meeting, also later that day, the committee interviews at City Hall. February 1st, this last weekend, the TEP Parade in Westminster, a great event. I want to thank to, he's not here, but Crash Champions, they provide the vehicle for us, the big, the big wagon that you see. And Eric Mendez is our driver, we want to thank him for, you know, being a warrior there and being there from 8:00 AM till, till noon at least, and then...
6:30 in the morning.
6:30 in the morning, okay, all right.
Just prefer to be early.
Okay, that's pretty early. And then Sunday, the Miss Fountain Valley Competition is a great, great event at the Saigon Center, so enjoyed seeing that. And yesterday, the... And yesterday, the OCTA Regional Transportation Planning Committee, I was kind of interesting, they're, at San Clemente, the beach is eroding, and so the railroad tracks there have been moving around, and they've been shut down, and so, a lot of our meeting yesterday was about, what do we do about to protect the railroad tracks? So the, there's a lot of competing factors, the people in San Clemente want to protect the beach, they want sand to come in, it's interesting to hear that a lot of the inland development, it used to be that the San Juan Creek just deposited sand on the beach, and over the years, as there was inland development, it sort of, the sand dried up, and that's part of the big reason why the beaches are starting to disappear. But we've got a lot of good ideas on, you know, moving sand and trying to get the beaches back, so look forward to seeing that over the next couple of years. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Harper.
Okay, my report as follows, on January 22nd, I attend the OCPA meeting along with Councilmember Grenness. Later in the afternoon, we recorded a podcast with our City Manager, Colin Burns, on the topic of enforcement mechanism for the homeless and group home. The video was just released today on my Facebook and the city website, if you're interested in viewing it. On July, I mean, January 23rd, I attend the ABAOC Lunar New Year Mixer along with our City Manager. In the evening, I participate in the Miss Fountain Valley Sandy Receptions, where there were many talented candidates, and it was a treat to see them practicing behind the scene. On January 25th, I attend the Fountain Valley Lunar New Year Festival at the Recreational Park, and had a great time. I want to thank Ms. Dow for originating this event, and now the torch has been passed down to Andrea from the center. Great job to the entire staff, we had actually over 450 attendees this year compared to 250 last year, so there was a big attendance, so it's a great job. On January 26th, I attend the Major League Players Alumni Association with KinderVision. Thank you to Kristi Orezza from Park Recreations for making the event possible. On January 27th, I attend the City Community Commissions along with my colleagues, meeting to interview the applicants. Again, thank you to all the candidates for applying. On January 28th, I attend the OC Board of Supervisor meeting to receive the TED Lunar New Year resolutions. After that, I attend the Senior Center Lunar New Year Lunches along with Councilmember Constantine. I also went to the Advanced Beauty College Lunar New Year celebrations, and visited several temples in the evening, this has been a longstanding tradition every year. Fortunately, this year, Councilmember Grenness, he regretfully couldn't join me because he had to work like real early in the morning.
And I'm getting old.
On January 29th to 31st, I attend the Mayor's Academy. On January 31st, I attend a celebration for Father Joseph Trent on his 35 years of community service at Holy Spirit Church. On February 1st, I attend the Westminster TED Parade for the Year of the Snake, and I want to thank you, my council member, for joining with me on this special occasion. It was especially delightful to have the Fountain Valley Royal Regiment, along with the Fountain Valley Chairman of Commerce, participate for the first time in the parade, in the TED Parade, I should say. What a great and memorable moments that day. Afterward, I attend the UVSA TED Lunar New Year celebrations. Again, we want, we can't thank enough to Crash Champion and Eric for driving the awesome red wagon for the last, what, five years? No, four, four years? Three years? Okay, three years, so I want to thank you for them for that. On February 2nd, I attend the VSA SoCal Soccer Tournament to raise money for the LA Firefighters, and I'm happy to announce that they raised 2,000 for them. In the afternoon, I attend the Miss Fountain Valley Scholarship Competitions, where the performance from all the candidates were amazing. And that concludes my report. Okay. The meeting is adjourned, and our next City Council is February 18 at 6:00 PM, right here in the Chairman of Commerce. That concludes our meeting for tonight.
Not Chairman of Commerce.
Oh, Chairman.
I knew what you meant. Close enough.
Yeah, sorry, I bet, perhaps next time I need to bring my glasses. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.